And let's start by. Say your first. So. As everybody had a chance to review. Are there any comments or corrections? Then I will take the motion to approve the minutes of meeting.
I support.
All second.
All in favor.
All right.
The next two items are on the agenda, of course, by this required action. First one is one fifty-two Hampstead Street. And the planning board really is asking if this body has any comments regarding preliminary review of the proposal. Does anyone have any comments?
I have to look at that. Okay.
Okay, so have we addressed that?
Do you think you can make a motion that we don't have anything?
Okay, so I'd like to. I will make the motion that we don't have anything at this time to comment on about the application of one fifty-two. Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Next one.
Hold on one minute.
Okay.
All right. So it's true that in the second. All right, go ahead. Sorry, guys.
No problem. Okay, next one is regarding thirty-one. And this is a resolution, a resolution to support the planning board to assume the ROB's lead agency under CPO.
I'll make that motion.
Oh, I'll second that. All in favor?
All right.
So we, that is odd that you're not interested in serving as leader.
Right, where, yeah, what they want us to.
Oh, well, now we have to sign it.
There is some. But they're going for it.
Right. This is a ten.
Thirteen.
Is it just me? Okay, with those two items acted on, we will move to the consent agenda matters. There were two matters. The first one is thirty-seven. Application for the certificate for purpose for proposed amendment. And the second was two sixty-one Main Street. And that was for new paint and landscaping. And it was one comment that the consent agenda people have, committee members had, we go a fence post type. But that has been addressed. And so with that, I'd like to ask you, any questions or discussions? All favor of adoptive consent agenda, so say so by saying aye.
Aye.
Who made the motion?
I did.
I'll second.
Never seen one. So with that closed, we'll move on to old business. And the first item was on old business is fifty-five Howard Street. Is there anyone here to represent fifty-five Howard Street?
Those are the most updated plans.
Thanks. So this is an application for significant.
Let's come out before the Azul. Technical difficulty, because I was holding my basement. But the one thing I remember that you had asked before.
Oh, that's good.
Zach, I think you had asked before. We're elevating the house a couple feet, and my addition in the back of the house, what the, you saw the roof line from the front. So I sense these drawings represent the fact that I've lowered the roof line in the back of the house. So the front elevation, the change in the front elevation, only the elevation for the regions that were raised in the house. So we're in a very weird FEMA zone, or in FEMA zone or not in FEMA zone, to suggestion of building a structure. The change to the elevation, as you see in the front, okay? I think you have some color drawings there, which is just showing some ZBA calculations of how we pierced the, the sky plane. If you know where originally started out, it's only bored, they came back to us and asked us to come to the architectural report to get some kind of a comments. So that's pretty much where we're at right now with proposed changes that we made.
Well, I have a question. If I look at it, is there a one with the color? And I see the existing, it says that it's one thousand eighty-two cubic feet, right, for the existing. But I don't see what it is for the proposed.
Are you looking at, I'm sorry, looking at the front elevation?
Yeah, well, whatever.
Well, you do not the left to do the front, I'm sorry.
Yeah, one, one thousand eighty-two cubic feet is stayed right there on the existing, you do that, but then there's nothing for the proposed. So I'm sure just what that.
I, I believe, I, I do believe when I made these changes on this, I did just strictly for A or B, so you can see that we had lowered the roof line, I don't think we calculated that out. My probably do a little fast right now, if you want me to. Believe that we're getting to that sky plane. Eight, four, six, three, six, nine.
Three, sixteen, nine, four, seventy-seven.
Yes, that's correct.
Basically the red.
Yeah, the change, yeah, it's four, it's four seventy-seven in addition to the.
One.
One eighty-two, yeah, one oh eighty-two, I'm sorry, yes.
I'm sorry, what was it?
Four seventy-seven is the double.
Four seventy-seven.
And that's by virtue of raising the house up, not adding new roof line to it, just raising the house up. And I think Zach, that was your concern when, you know, you hadn't made the comment the last time we spoke.
So, so looking at this diagram, you were saying it's going to be a roof deck?
No, no roof deck, no.
So, oh, I'm sorry, that's a racing, no, it's a racing roof there?
Yes.
It, okay, look like railings.
Yeah, the only way to, to get a roof on this thing, I'd have to go to metal roof, correct?
It's not really. This is. Yeah. Raised, racing metal. So we can't, so you can't act.
This is like a discussion.
Yeah. Because it's.
ZB.
Oh, I'm sorry. Between the lock and the hard place.
So you're looking for input?
I'm looking for input, that is correct.
Well, your new, your additions, the roof level seems to be the exact same height as the. Top of the old house. Okay.
Those are the comments that you had made the last time.
Right. It would be better if it were lower.
Yeah, I think the comment would probably, I don't know exactly how the conversation went, but I would say that's, it shouldn't exceed the existing range.
No.
And it would be even better to step it down, especially when you, I mean, the actual, I don't know about that four hundred cubic, I think, I think aside from the technicalities, it's really the visual impact of, and of, of the mass of the house that you're proposing, the enlargement of the back. That's really the point.
And once you raise it, it's going to even make it seem big.
A little bit, a little bit. Nothing you can do about that because FEMA's still need to have.
Right.
But, and I think that overly long sort of, I don't know, I don't want to say it looks like the entrance to a, to a bank. But the covered patio of the banks has its back as a, through the elongated, disporcetly long sort of roof. And that's part of, so in effect, that area, which is open, plus the center area, the two full two-story, right? Unlike the original house, which is, which is a one and a half story, because the upper windows are hovering there in that sort of half attic space. So your back extension actually gives the house a full two-story addition. And so the footprint of all of that is actually more than doubles the actual footprint of the old house. And I just feel visually that that's accentuated because of that really, really long covered patio, which wouldn't, I don't know. I mean, it's nice, but.
Which, which, the, the elevation, the two wishes that is, is. You feel that proportion?
I was looking at the colored one, but like that's making so.
But it do, it with, I mean, in other words, the, the extension, the back extension, it's the, it's the full width of the extension. We can shorten it up by just coming out of, looking at the floor plan, just coming out of the dining area and making that the covered area.
Well, oh, I'm just making the visual observation that as, because this is a, the board's concerned with what you see. Right? And what it's impacted. And you can represent that in numbers and percentage, what you're allowed to build or all the rest of it. But when it boils down to what matters, it's what it looks like.
Okay.
It's because this is an expense kind of situation. So as you're out there on the street, looking toward the side, because what you're saying is that for the front of your, your back extension sits at the height of existing roof, even though the whole thing's going to be elevated, that's a separate issue. So, but from the side of what you're proposing to build, more than doubles the footprint of that. And that's accentuated by that really, really long covered patio, because, you know, your eyes can see that column, which is sitting all the way at the back corner, holding that thing up. So that's how long the house is. And I'm also feeling that when you look at it from the back, which most people won't unless they're invited into your backyard, that sort of flat, that's the roof line that my house has, which was built in nineteen sixty-seven. It has this wonderful low pitch. That looks like the sixties ranch profile. Now, I guess you're not going to see that from either side, what you can see is it's like a flat standing scene. Okay, from the back, it's, it's strange. Detail, but visually, I guess from the side, you won't really read it that way, the messing won't kind of leave that way. But these are just comments.
Yeah.
Offering up. So, so staying on that section of the house, I also think that maybe we should do something. I guess we, we call it a dorma, that, right, on the, we're still outside of left elevation. The south elevation, I should say. Yeah. That's the same, well, it's, it's the same thing in terms of the original roof line. And, and having this somewhat subservient to that. Right, that why should you come, come across, wherever you drop it by, should, should be. This should not be the same height as the original.
Okay, I understand.
Definitely. How, why do you have to raise it for FEMA?
We are looking at thirty inches. This is freeboard, so technically, I only have to, you know, to meet FEMA, we have to, you know, only raise it half a foot. But we need two feet of freeboard for New York State Cup. So it's thirty inches.
So that puts your steps in up to the front.
Correct, right. Well, right now, yeah, from the side, you kind of like goes down and, you know, step up to the house, so.
Are you raising the existing structure thirty inches and then, and then you're building?
Then we're building right back. So to Zach's comment, you know, if we can try to get that roof line, the ridge of the roof line, whether the addition is lower than the existing, better.
That would be much better.
Sure, the, you know, sure, which perhaps, or you don't see that, you know, the elongation, you know, from the side location, which is pretty much the drive to side location. You know, the one given to the south, let's consider recently.
And if you could drop the roof. It's the sort of like the connector section of the roof, which comes off your house, and then it leads to the back section, where you've lifted the roof up so you can walk around there.
Pretty much a play diagram.
Right, so I'm just wondering, to sort of lessen the effect of that new roof line itself, all the way back across both sections there. If you could drop the central portion down, so that off the original roof line, the new construction would step down a bit, maybe a foot. And then carry back, and then if it bumped up again, it would relieve some of the sense, I feel, of the, of how sort of massive all this is. I know, it's just.
No, I think, I think one way.
Kind of the end of the line.
And I think what I could do is just, it's to be a little more cohesive, I can just lower my play line. Just that foot all the way across, so this one has one cohesive line, lower, lower the roof line there, and maybe just do something with that reverse cable on that one side, with a, with a bedroom, the bathroom. So just make that a little bit more uniform in there. Just the old one line show up on the porch, you know.
Yep.
And then lower the ridge line of that whole thing.
That was.
That would be the, although if it had two different heights.
Yeah, that would.
It would be. More bestful to the eye. Yeah. The one longer line is, is just.
Yeah.
Speed widely too much.
Okay.
If it, if it went up down and then up again slightly, it would be your advantage on the thing.
Okay.
And getting back to the cover of the panel, does, does anyone think that? If it's shortened? Am I reading ten by ten in the direction, the, the dimensions here, right? Ten by. It's, it looks like.
This twenty-four what? It's sixteen D. It's sixteen, sixteen, yeah, it's.
Sixteen six.
Oh, yeah, well, so it's sixteen by twenty-four.
So, you know, shorten it up in both directions, you know, maybe make it go, maybe goes to eighteen, a little more portion, doesn't need to go in front of the kitchen window. To not have a covered area for, you know, dining and pretty much want to eat outside in nice weather.
Yeah, so for example, just the, the roof over it, which carries into the two-story section of your building. Again, if that roof, if the roof over the covered patio actually stepped back, because the actual structure was set in from that elevation. Then there would be a break there. Again, I think what's hurting this is that it's a very modest, charming little guy in the front, you know. And so add it, turn that into something that a larger.
There's several over there, too.
Yeah, and so both of the upper roof line and that lower one carrying the, for the covered patio, both accentuate how small this is. So anything that could stop that.
Well, if you look where the, the second floor rent, the second floor is about five feet in.
Yeah.
Okay, from, you know, that, that area, so that's kind of accentuating that roof line that I have, so we cut that back maybe by five.
Back to that, yeah. And then maybe not carry it back as far as it's now. There again, from the street, those columns supporting both corners of it will not lead. They're just far back, and they'll both be recessed in from the side walls. Depending ever. Visually, I could make a, make a difference. The other comments, maybe you want to say? Okay. So. Do you have any other questions?
There's no, there's no chimney, so that means you're just not having a fireplace or.
Does that disappear years ago?
No, I don't think there ever was one.
Now, well, there, there wasn't chimney on there, the, the fireplaces were, the places both was probably actually be rid of the fireplaces. Where they are right now in the middle of the house, we're trying to open the floor plan. There's actually a fireplace in the kitchen, there's a fireplace in the great room, the back-to-back, they're not functional right now, they've been closed up.
And so you're not going to reopen them?
We're not going to reopen them.
No chimneys. Okay. Chimneys already won.
So chimneys have already taken down both roof. I mean, there's no visible.
There's no visible, that is correct, yeah.
Got it, okay, well done.
That probably looked nice back in the day when they had the nice chimneys.
Yeah, but they had you.
It would have had chimney on the historic part.
Yeah, or a missing chimney.
I was trying to eliminate the steep steps that are in that house, because she still goes up the stairs. And the first time I went last time was well down the stairs.
It's tight.
Yeah, very tight, you know that house is. Okay, I will give these corrections, the drawings, thank you, I appreciate the, the input. Great, we'll back, back to you soon, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah.
Gregory's going to make a motion to disable this until.
Okay.
This is for, this is one we just did.
Correct.
So I'll make that motion table fifty-five Howard Street.
All in favor?
Aye.
So let's table so after the CPA. Okay, so the next presentation we have is regarding twenty-nine groups and. Over. Oh, we should ask you, I was, Delink when I was asking every people their name and their address or their affiliation with the project.
My name is Inez Fernandez, I work with Empower Soul and I work with Justin Newberg for twenty-nine groups.
Okay. Did you hear all that? Yeah.
I didn't get your name, but I get it afterwards.
Okay. So please tell us about your project.
We are proposing to install thirty-two panels in front of the house. On the southwest of this. I guess we're just looking for okay to install.
All right, so. We looked at this, we're going to check this easily. But somehow. You said the southwest. The south. That's the street, that's the front, right, that's the street. And that was our concern. So do you have, can you tell us about the set panels, because generally, this is historic?
No.
No. But it's still cut from.
Well, the code, right, whatever the code tells us, if it has the.
Some kind of determination that can't see Alice from the street.
Right.
Jesus.
Right.
Well, so can you, you have. A sideboard would be helpful. Yeah, so I, I just wanted to picture up. And I'll see if you have it.
Nice to receive this.
It's, it's.
Okay, yeah.
That's the front, that's the front, this is the front.
This is the porch, that includes porch or.
That is the front, right, is that part of the house? Yes, that is.
Yeah, right.
Okay.
So.
Oh, right.
Okay, so this is from my.
You see, yeah, with it, so like. Yeah, it's like that. This is, this gives you a better idea than this.
If you can get, do look at the size of the size. Yes.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
So this is, that's from saying. Oh, I see, so just crouch me up like the temptation place. Right, let's get this sort of, right. So, yeah, so if you're out the street, you can see that. Right, so now it has an expansive roof to the north also from that south from the dining. Is there anywhere that you expect to? Cause this is the street, and although you're the neighbor here, you're a good person, you won't block the hill. Or allow the, really, I should say. This is still very.
Drive by, you can see.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do the panels work on the north face?
I know, it's something we will have to speak with Andrew.
Okay, I think typically there's more sun beaten down on the, on the south side than on the north, but it's coming down everywhere. So that was why we didn't prove it last time, apparently, Ros and Clay, you guys, but, but we, we'd like to see. If, let me see, can't see the samples of, of the cuts. This is another panel themselves, isn't that? Yeah.
All right, this is a house with the same panels, right? So honestly, the way it's, the way it is right now, with what you're asking us, we can't prove. So if you want to come back with, you know, a different, trying to different placement of these, then we can't vote for this again.
I could come back when maybe you.
Yes, yes, her advice is, is perfect. Now, that being said, there are panels that look like roofing shingles.
The Tesla ones?
The Tesla, so now, now they're more competition, but that's what I'm talking about. They are expensive, but, but maybe those things, so that we didn't know that they were panels, right? So that would really do it. That would, that would be great.
I think that would blend in with the.
Right.
It looks just like a shingle. Yeah. I was looking at the garage, the back of the garage looks like a, a possible spot, because it's very steep.
Okay.
And maybe that's a possible.
That's our concerns, that's not seen from the street.
Okay, yeah, and there is a, there is a street on the back, but there are, when I go around, crack this trees. But I think you guys will figure out the best spot.
Right.
And that we can't, and so we can't do it in the front, the way it is now, we can't, not for, not to those. Now, if they got the Teslas type, could they put them up front?
I, I think so, I hear that they have a glare, but in this case, they wouldn't glare into their neighbors, because neighbors above the street, above them.
Yeah.
So I think so, but it's not a bright glare, it's just kind of a shame for us. As I said, we put some in, on, on Flower Street or Howard Street.
Yeah.
That was the part that the camera that says he's winding through his window.
And then also another option for the.
That's, those are the Tesla ones. So, yeah, so the panels that look like architectural things.
Since this is my story.
Sorry.
But I think if you're talking, but you could keep this on.
Is it with this?
What's wrong with the country? Oh, I think, yeah, maybe we should adapt the country. I mean, it's a, it's a.
Sorry. Yeah, all good? Okay.
So the next time, bring the other options, yeah?
Yep. Thank you. Thank you.
Because they can't be seen from, you know, from by the neighbor or by through the screen. All right? Thanks.
I hope you didn't have a long drive to that. No, yeah, there were no. No, yeah, they were not here, did they break that side, that was fun. Okay, so that's all business. We'll take, yeah, we'll take this for the twenty nine rooms soon, will be table and returned to us.
I'll, I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Turning to new business, first item under new business is twelve Green Street.
German.
Okay.
I'll make motion with German, twelve Green Street.
Who wants to say?
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor, please?
Aye.
Well, we get to some business here. Okay. Who is representing sixty six? Okay, I. Can you?
Yes.
Let's know who you are.
My name is Kate Overton, I'm the architect representing the. Tonya and Carol. They are back here doing the old school presentation.
That's how we all learn.
Yeah. So, good evening. I will watch this. So, this is an existing house. Roughly twenty. And we're looking to do a proposed horizontal span, just basically making a larger ranch house. The main move for, I guess, layout of the interior is, just to walk you through why. Is to, this thing houses are in this zone here, and we're building out towards the south and towards the back. So creating an L-shaped kind of profile for a plan. The house is proposed to be within all setbacks, there's no skyplan in person proposed on this. And fortunately, we don't have to cut down many trees. We're being able to maintain everything, so the landscaping will be essentially just new sod on the, on the property. We are also on site putting in a new IA system for the septic that we're all familiar with. And as a requirement due to the, in the large unit, the existing house being greater than twenty five percent. So we're doing that, we're in process of that right now, doing this up accounting, health department. But basically, that's the, the general. Conceptual portion of the house, essentially building out towards the back and towards the south. We're proposing also a new deck on the rear, the rear yard. This is sort of partially covered. And relative to that, we are putting a new fence around the rear yard, starting at this back lot line here, or sorry, rear, rear lot line. Or sorry, rear house line for the rear yard, the new proposed rear yard. And then it returns over here and there's a gate on both end. That fence is a horizontal plank cedar fence. So, traffic into exterior finishes. Get there.
Is it easier for you?
That needs something ginormous. So just really quickly, the interior is basically, they have, the bedrooms are like on the side. And that's why we kind of pulled out the side for the bedrooms to open up the main living space in this area. And bringing up the main living space, there's a chimney that's existing there, I'm just going to jump right to the elevations. Actually, first, let me show you the original house, so you can see it's on the houses.
So the chimney is already there.
There's a chimney already kind of asymmetrically set, yeah, it's very prominent. It's actually kind of the, we love the chimney, we thought it's kind of a great little attribute to that mid-century bungalow. Nature of this house and this neighborhood. So we're, we're kind of using it as a catapult to why our, our main kind of move to the house, which is essentially a double dormer. So, on the front of the house. This is existing chimney, we're adding to it, we're cladding the chimney as well as the base of the house with a, with a, essentially a tile. But it'll, it'll look like, like a stone. Yeah, it's a kind of a stone, more naturalistic, warm gray stone. And that will wrap around the whole house and up on the chimney. And then because that kind of vertical gesture of the chimney, we decided let's pop up a dormer on the front of the house. To again, open up that interior space to be a little bit more airy. And introduce these upper transom windows. We're flanking either side of the chimney with nice windows. A new front door, kind of in its original position, but it kind of slightly modified. In that area, there's a small deck there, we have a secondary entrance off to the side here, that's more of a convenience, straight to the, from the driveway to the kitchen area. So it's more of a secondary door off the front. The roof is a charcoal asphalt shingle, the timberline product, that's pretty nice for what it is. The siding is a horizontal arctic white, it's the color of the hardy plank, so we're doing a cement board siding, it's. Siding. The new windows and doors are all Anderson products, they're case sets and big combinations. A room and their. We. And there's a new gutter along the eve, that's also a black. And then that kind of motif wraps around the whole house. And towards the back, I call it a double dormer because we have a dormer towards the rear yard inside that pops up for the same intention, to create that taller space within the main living room area. And dining room, et cetera. We have a double slider door facing the back porch, again, there's upper transoms. Yes, exactly, yeah, exactly, when you enter the house and you're in this kind of living room, dining room, kitchen area, you're able to see, you know, clear through the house. So there's sort of a clear span of structure. The radius can't double story, and it's greatest color quality, but you get, I think you get just a bit. For code reasons. And then this move with the windows are sort of joined with a vertical, like a darker French, like a charcoal ship lap that's set in. We're trying to make the windows feel like more horizontal gesture, again, kind of accentuating that, that ranch. So we don't have a bunch of holes in the house, we thought it was kind of cool to carry it through as a, as a larger move. And then, so this, this view is looking at the inside corner here, so this is the living room, dining room beyond here. And then there's a hallway passing by over here, which has another secondary whole slider door. So it becomes another way for the family to come and go to their back porch from the private area of the house. So there's sort of like a private zone and a public zone, so to speak. I think the only last thing to note is we're, we're creating an egressible stairway from the basement space. Right now, there's a hatch, we're moving that Bilco hatch, yeah, that, that's going. And we're, we're basically. There's this existing sunroom that we're turning into a proper structure on the first floor. Which is becoming the kitchen, right now it's a sunroom and it's not on very significant foundation, so we're doing a new foundation, the crawl space. But not enlarging the basement. But we do want to get from the basement out of the house, and because the deck is over here, we are. A pathway here, a little hallway in the basement, so the only excavation and basement would be to create this and a stair that leads out towards the side of the house. And then we have an egressible window well here for making this a legal bedroom, so. In the basement, so there is a basement, bedroom and a basement, hangout zone and a new stair. A lot going on in the whole house.
It's the basement.
Well, we're looking out, we'll do a crawl space on there. We've built out the entire basement, in this case, we're being a little bit more conscious, so instead of excavating all down to create more basement space, we're just treating it as crawl space.
So I think two velocity does, I surprise. So it is a lot of coverage, huh?
Yeah.
I think the builders, they're interested in a pool, but it may be in the future, and they're leaving it to their kids. You know, this is a legacy house, this family bought this house just, just this past year, or less than two years ago. And they wanted to make it great for them and then hand it off to their kids, they have adult kids and. They can, yeah, they have a deck. I told them, by the way, lock coverage, we're all within lock coverage for both building and, and overall lot. So that's, we're all good there, but yes, a pool would take up this. I told them, you have a deck or you have a pool and let your kids deal with that.
Any questions and comments?
I think it's very handsome.
It's not, and if you have been able to say it's one foot and one side. Some previous expansions, so congratulations, I think.
Story, I like.
Yeah.
So I'll make motion for six, six, never this happening.
And I will second that motion. All face.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Nice to meet you.
Thank you. So Robert's signing. One sixty one division.
Here.
No, here.
Anyone here? We didn't have a picture on her, I presented up the. It's a historic, so let's.
Exactly, they're just. Okay, so then let's, let's, okay, this is a whole lot of.
They said there's only one, right? One, one side window, right?
No, I think that's four.
So I'm like that. Then I'm thinking, are they?
Yes.
It's so happy they did that.
The trucks, they were helping you. It's a thing too, I guess, to make sure.
Are they?
Sorry, oh yes.
I'm getting the other one. Are they? I wonder. I'm actually paying with. That's what I'm saying.
Right.
That's a revolution. To match the existing.
So, so I think to match the existing is the window. Although. Which is about the same dimension. What would you really hope for other adjustments? And I think the part of it, if you really help to see what it is.
As we say.
I don't find it spexed. Where that's red. It says, how to improve, you're shameful, to match existing. So I don't really understand what's there. So in that case, you're trying to align the window. They're trying to get some.
Do we know this one about the windows themselves?
Oh yeah, windows, the schedule, I think, called for replacement.
Oh yeah, look at that.
Windows.
Yeah.
These are margins.
What I want to know is. Those are like five years old. Exactly, are they, are they historic windows?
But that's okay, so that's about the actual window status, the other is moving.
Right.
To do each, each window. So that's, that's kind of another.
Does it matter if it's not, if it's on the side of the house though, because you can only really see.
But I'm looking at this front. Touch. Would you care, are you looking at the front? Right, in the front, on the downstairs, okay. To have a pair of windows like that is already.
I see your thing. It's not so bad, yes.
And that's all we're here, we. All the windows to the. Red side, it's also. Everything in the house today has been changed. That may be, maybe.
Yeah, also, is this wing off the back the same vintage as the front? Or is it newer, or is it?
Yeah.
Do they have old windows, do they have new ones? Yeah, seems like you need a same, is it?
Yes. I think that's great. So, I would second Marshall's tale, for like the. Front side. And to go for that.
I'll second that.
So, we're here for eleven territory drive. Can you identify yourself, young man?
Yes. Good evening, I'm with the board of the streetsman two seventy nine Main Street. I'm here as every guy for the architect. Just to refresh your recollection, we were here in July. This is a property that has. A certificate of appropriateness and a building permit in place. The current owner purchased the property. Built it together. The, the last time we were here, I want to speak for the board, we seem to get a generally favorable response, but there were some questions and concerns that were raised about some screening. For one of the neighbors, and so just made some changes. Start by bringing that to your attention and.
So what I did, um I placed the footprint of the fifteen. Period drive in a relationship to the eleven period drive and um. And kind of like roughly found the location of the high windows. Uh the only windows they have on on the side, which is facing eleven carrier. Uh the high windows, they're not like full height. They're probably start like maybe the the sill is like about uh four foot six or something like that. Um so here's here's the here's the windows.
That's the ground floor.
No, it's the second floor. Ground floor really of no concern because uh it cut off from the second floor. By uh by the big canopy of the uh fifteen. Yeah, it's like a car cardboard, as you could see right there. And they don't really have many windows um on the first floor there anyway. And we don't really have any windows, any little windows on this side. So it's really a concern is uh what do you see from? The balcony on which here, when you look toward the uh fifteen. Toward the neighbor. And of course, it's a concern for my clients as well, because they don't really wanna necessarily look at the uh building there. So um so if you kind of draw the line of where the the end of the balcony is and with the beginning of the windows. Is it's it's pretty much like where the balcony ends, the window starts. So. There is not too much uh of the privacy concern over there, but we decided to protect ourselves just in case. And we proposed to place uh two green giants uh in this location. So they would be blocking completely the the windows. On the top of that, we thought maybe it's a good idea to introduce the planter with a Manhattan unanimous. Um it's a it's a like a skinny uh plant um on if if you look from the side. But it provides like almost like a shield um if if you planted in the balcony and it uses used exactly for this reason, like to. Uh to provide the the privacy.
You're saying setback fifteen territory. Is I don't know if that's maybe twelve fifteen feet from the. Radar line and that the setback from eleven is going to be.
So 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 this is the this is the that line represent the line of the uh property line. Between uh the eleven.
Right.
Terry and fifteen.
I'm asking about on the water side.
On the water side?
Yeah, because the the whole thing. I thought you dropped it straight. You know, the the. The that's true. In this case, it would be almost a hundred eighty degree size lines.
You mean like if you stand right here, yeah.
Ninety degrees takes you to the water, ninety degrees takes you to the street. So.
Right, but you there there is only one window on this side.
So what I'm just trying to say. Eleven territory is very small. We use the term. This is called front yard water facing. And the idea is about the balcony. I think this is treats.
This is a site, yeah, the.
Sorry.
Yeah, this is the this is the full um. That's that's the full yard. This is the this is the water side and this is the front.
Right. So I'm saying comparison to that setback from the front yard of the water side. That is. Because you're showing a big difference in in. And and um. I'm just saying. Block you from interfering with that process. It seems like you are.
Yes, I am. Yes, yeah. So this is, yeah, this is where the deck is. And this is the second floor balcony. This is the first floor deck. And that's the uh fifteen fifteen um Karen drive. And this is where this is where the the house ends um of eleven carry. And this is where the house ends of fifteen. So the fifteen sits closer to the water than than eleven.
They still, I'm just trying to see. She's drawing straight lines and really have to draw a delta of fame.
On the first floor though, uh.
The deck is on the first floor.
Yeah, the deck is on the first floor, but we don't have windows in the first floor here.
Okay, please. I'm not asking about windows. I'm really focusing on the backyard fifteen turn drive and having privacy.
But that's the that's the backyard and it's the the deck is not in the backyard at all. Because that's the line where it ends and that's the that's the back of the house. And thi- this is where the. This is where the deck is. It's still behind. It's still behind their 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 house.
I understand. So within our purview's landscape. So so so. Maybe something so that it's proxy between the two.
Well, there is a existing landscape line which we didn't really uh change, which was approved. And uh we are.
And can we just go back to the last page? I just wanted. Mr. Williams, you talking about maybe another green giant?
Or something else that that we provide. And I actually think the fifteen has. But they don't se- no, they don't separate. They're pitched on the front and on the side. So yeah, so that's. Yeah, or something that obscure the other type of plants that you're touching. So let me just say one thing about your landscape plan and and Mr. Freeman knows about. It's not enough for you, so. Proving some of them. So if you can, please call. Any other comments, any thoughts?
I I I just how you respond to what the comments that were made. I can't help but think like, and I know you're not talking about the little windows.
Yeah, I'm I'm concerned about that, but 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 uh. These people have had this house. It's happened. It has been modified, but they've had this lot for several five years. So.
Like privacy. So so they're absolutely open to uh to put as many hedges and as many. Green giants as is required to uh block their views. That's for sure. What do you want? What do you want us to do? Yeah, that's a great idea, actually. Yeah.
Any other thoughts or questions? All in favor? You want some of these out?
It's something different.
Right, and so um.
Green giants do uh are are you values will be to to place there. And we can plant two more.
We're good. If we can just ask ask them to to modify the plant, just write on the land. Yeah.
Stamps in to us.
We need this that stamps in to us. This one, yes, this one. Yeah, that's what I sent today.
No, this one is August eleven.
That one has like steps, but this one, this one, I just think, right? Oh, okay. Which one? Supposed to be nine oh two. This is, yeah, the trees are there, so it should be there. This is the way we can consider this to be later.
Cause I didn't receive anything.
That's 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 what you should. Where those little guys are on the deck and the other run it toward the water. This is what you are. This is what you're saying. Yeah.
You can show them here. One and another one like that.
Great, can you go make a motion for this? I make a motion to adjourn.